Question is to do with timelines. How soon do we expect to see action? Thank you.
Thank you. Perhaps before the Honorable Minister will be answering the question because I understand we really don't have time. Maybe we'll just take one more. I understand engineer Satome Ahmed has a question he wants to ask. We will take that and then we will revert back to the moderator. Engineer Satome Ahmed, please. Please give him the microphone. He's behind there. He's just coming in. Omar, please give him the microphone. All the member, please be as fast as you can. Okay.
Thank you, my uncle. Mine is a contribution, not an answer. I stand on the existing protocols. I want to suggest that even going to look at it in a multi-dimensional way, that is looking at the non-kinetic solution to this vandalization that has happened. If you look at the modus operandi of this Boko Haram, how they normally used to destroy these towers, there is a signal that maybe they are sending a message. Because if you look at it, the points of destruction are close by always a man one location, is that there are several towers even sighted right inside Sambisa, towards the Tukutu Triumphs and the rest. So by sending it towards Nnamdu, Benishere, down to Maenok, simply they are signaling that they can be contacted. Maybe the DSS who are supposed to be on the top approach to look at the non-kinetic solution and to engage them either in talking so that we weigh the two and see, talking to them or not talking to them was the solution. So therefore, I think the best... So I think the best way and the workable way for now is the non-kinetic solution because we have been seeing the effort of the military from the eighth month to now, the kinetic solution does not give us the solution. So therefore, let's invite the multi-dimensional way to adopt the non-kinetic solution so that we will have a lasting solution on that thing. And I'm sure the available intellect showing that there is a way to contact them and to approach and to start talking on that. Thank you very much.
Okay. We thank you most sincerely for all your suggestions, for all your questions, for all your contributions during this session. May I, first of all, clear with the Honorable Minister of Information. Honorable Minister, Galaxy Backbone are here. Some issues have been raised and they want to chip in. If you direct, I will ask Galaxy Backbone, if you are here because you've just approached us now, please come forward quickly, chip in and say what you want to contribute on this matter so that we can hear you and see how far we can go. Galaxy Backbone, thank you.
There it is. Pausa Villasavilla Dean, in the shade of Anurajim, Bismillah, Rawa Anurajim. I am Adam Umar Gokarun, the Executive Director of Galaxy Backbone. Director, Chief Executive Officer, Galaxy Backbone Professor M. B. Abuwakar, who is unavoidably absent for another state assignment. Galaxy Backbone was established by the Federal Government to provide network connectivity and infrastructure facilities for the communication industry. Questions was raised as regards to vandalization of masks. And so, a line was raised, the Honorable Minister of Communication and Digital Economy come up with a proposal that was blessed by the Federal Executive Council. And at present, Galaxy Backbone is currently extending fiber network for about 12 states of the Federation, covering about 332 kilometers of the fiber optic. And also, Galaxy Backbone at present is extending fiber metro for about 332 kilometers of road, cutting across 23 states of the Federation. And in all the two infrastructural development currently going on, Boru and the internal systems states are also going to benefit from the extension. And I have the belief that by the time the services are done, there is every tendency that the problem of vandalization and so on will be a thing of the past, Insha Allah. Similarly, by designing the telecommunications infrastructure as a national critical infrastructure, we have the belief that by Insha Allah, the problem will naturally become things of the past. However, where surveillance cameras are also installed in strategic locations for monitoring, I have the belief that it will also curtail the continuation of the vandalization. And Galaxy Backbone has the capacity to provide network connectivity for monitoring the solution for the infrastructure that can be hosted in the Tier 3, which is currently demissed in Abuja. And compartment is supported by the Tier 4, which is currently undergoing construction at Kanu and will further be supported by the Recovery Center at Lagos and Enobu. And with the collaboration of the security agencies and other stakeholders, we have the belief that Insha Allah, there will be curtailment of the continuation of the destruction of the infrastructure. Thank you, Assalamualaikum.
Galaxy Backbone, thank you very much. Your Excellencies, distinguished guests, ladies and gentlemen. The Chaita Commander is here. He provides the security to all these installations. Honorable Minister and Your Excellency, the Executive Governor, with your permission, please, may we allow them say one or two things before we round off. Chaita Commander, sir.
Your Excellency, the Governor of Boru State, Excellency Deputy Governor, the Honorable Minister of Information, Royal Fathers, gentlemen. My name is Major General C.G. Moussa, Chaita Commander of Opeysho Hattinkain. I am honored and privileged to be here. Actually, initially didn't want to say a word, but I think it is important, I mentioned this, being, having been providing security all through, especially through the power line, we have reason to believe that there are sabotists around that are making it impossible for this to be achieved. And I think it is important that we, the security leaders at home, we need to look inward. There are certain individuals that are doing everything possible to ensure that that work is not completed for whatever reason. And so, I want to call on the Excellency to get across the opinion leaders in those communities, especially around that area. They give information of our movements, they give information of what we do on daily basis. We try as much as possible to maintain 24-hour surveillance, which is a difficult task, but as soon as we leave, information is passed around and things happen. So I think it is important that we look at those aspects. Secondly, on the issue of suggestions from my own part on, I think, the way forward, is to make the sales of these equipments and items being vandalized very difficult. There must be punitive punishments for anybody found sending those things. So the markets must be supervised, what is going on in the market. One way out is we have carbon marking that could be placed, that could be placed on some of these equipments. We could give them different colors, we could carbon mark them so that any markets that this things are found, it should be traced, who is bringing it, how does it get there? If we don't stop that, once there's a market for this things to be sold, individuals will continue, you know, there's a lot of poverty, people will want to vandalize those items for their own selfish interest. So I think for Opeysho Hattinkain, it is important that we all put this together. We're here to ensure that that light starts because we are also suffering from it. We have a lot of equipments, we have a lot of resources, both land, maritime and air force with us, that we need to keep them at certain temperatures. And that's why it's important. So we're equally affected because economically, we have to subject so much resources in ensuring that we run through generators for the four hours to ensure those things are kept at those temperatures. So I want to appeal that all the efforts we are making, we should look inward. All the imams, the ulamas, the leaders within those communities, there is so much we can do and I'm sure if we all put this together, we'll end this and there will be light in the middle. Thank you very much.
We thank the Chaita Commander for his suggestions and his remarks, and we do hope that we will carbon mark some of these our products so that if they are found anywhere, those with it will be dealt with. Your Excellencies, distinguished guests, ladies and gentlemen, we are fast getting towards the end of this program. But before we go, permit me to now invite the Moderator of this program, the Honorable Minister of Information and Culture.
...rely on the already severally established protocol. I would probably start my concluding remarks by proffering answers to Mrs. Aja Aisha Umar's in Christus. I wish we had more time because the DG NOA, who is here, would have been in better position really to tell us not just what NOA is going to do to ensure that our message gets down to the grassroots, but actually what we've been doing. And I think NOA has been a lot in this respect to ensure that our messages, you know, cascades down to the grassroots. I might interest you to know that NOA has presence in each of the segments of the local governments in the Federation. And they are not, they are very busy. We receive every fortnight reports from each of these states coordinators on what is actually happening within the local government. And that is why it's easy for us to let you know the price of onion in any part of the country. We can tell you the price of palm oil, the price of granola. And our NOA monitors in each local government. They are very close with the terrorist leaders and they always give us advanced warning system on, you know, what is going on. As a matter of fact, their schedule report is extremely reliable. I wish you have time, I wish we have time, I would have spoken more about the NOA. I think another question raised was, he wanted to know what the government is doing in terms of employment. Because unemployment is actually one of the reasons why we have a lot of violence and a lot of very patriotic activities. Yes, I agree with you, Aja. But you see, it's like chicken and egg. Without infrastructure, you simply can't have industries. Without infrastructure, you can't have optimal employment. Now, I think both the Minister and the Ratseta Woki, and this is why I gave in my address, the various infrastructure project is completed and they are indirectly leading to employment. But the more we vandalize this infrastructure, the more unemployment we are going to have, whether it's roads or there is bridges. So like I said, in like chicken and egg thing, we must take ownership of infrastructure and ensure that the only way we can continue our growth is by protecting infrastructure. It's one thing for us to provide, but I think the community also has responsibility to protect them. And that leads to the third leg of the question, which is, what are we doing in areas where we have multiple billion investment? What are we doing to protect them? Friendly speeding, only the people can protect this infrastructure. It's not possible for us without the cooperation of the citizens to do so. We just been told now by the telecoms minister that we have about 15,000 sites. If we have just two policemen or two soldiers in each of these sites, 24 hours, we need only 1,000 of them. But let the people please take ownership of this infrastructure in the vision to what security is doing. But without the community ownership, we will not be able to succeed. And they should please understand that the immediate beneficiaries of this infrastructure and people living there, because they get the light, they get the jobs. So we continue on our own path as government to do our best, but please I think we need to do much more than they are doing now. I think you also asked this question about timeline. Now, I listened to the presentations of both keynote speakers, and I think what would have been, we have, we're fighting anti-secialist war. The battle against terrorism is what is the key. And I must say that, just like the power minister still said, we probably cannot say everything here. Honorable, the Excellency, the Governor, just before we came here, said that if he had known for us not have wanted us to publicly announce the date of this particular town meeting, that as soon as we announced it, terrorists went and blew up three towers. So there is a lot is connected, a lot is actually answered. Security along, also answered, you know, strategy. But we will continue to work very closely with all stakeholders to ensure that Pranu State and the entire country would finally overcome all the challenges. I thank you very much. Now, Excellency, I am very satisfied and pleased with the outcome of this town hall meeting. And I thank all the panelists for their presentations and also thank all the contributors for their contributions. Excellency, you already set the stage for the presentations with a clear initiation of the hour experiences of the people of the states due to the wanton destruction of power infrastructure. Shockingly, you said that within 24 hours, after the repair of the damaged section of the transmission lines, the lines were destroyed again. And I think this is the most painful and this is actually what we are struggling with on a daily basis. But the Excellency did not just dwell on the problems. I think he also suggested solutions such as deployment of technology to protect critical infrastructure. He also suggested a continued sanitization of the seasonally and also the involvement of forces in protecting public infrastructure. I think these are solutions which we believe are sustainable and on our own part, as the government, we take back to the federal government and would continue to act on that, especially on the issue of providing technology to monitor our critical infrastructure. But the Excellency also, again, announced some good news, especially the approval by the federal government on alternative power sources such as the thermal and the solar and the fact that already, just a few weeks ago, this was launched and that is expecting contractors to resume on the site very soon. And this will surely make what the people of Maiduguri and the civilians, what they are going to announce, would have to bring it to the very good end. Your Excellencies, I am also happy that other centers on behalf of the Honorable Ministers of Power and Minister of Communication and Technology also brought, you know, on the possible solutions. The representative of the Honorable Minister of Power suggested the deployment of security surveillance system, ensuring no market for vandalized public assets. And also asked for the penalty for vanders and we appealed to the media not to over sensationalize the activities of the vanders. I think these solutions go along the same sentiments of many people who made their contribution here today. For its part, the representative of the Honorable Minister of Communication and Digital Economy also suggested the need for, for, to, for, for the authorities. I think by the authorities, what he's saying is that they should plan for more than they need, you know, at the moment, so that when they sabotage, he can quickly cover a quality. Vandalism, and of course, we have also informed that there are other areas of sabotage. Vandalism, yes, but then what about theft, which is also a great source of vandalism? And it's also the issue of lack of access by the telecoms operators and also the power operators. And this again bothers on the security. Of course, everybody, like you also stressed, the need for continual citizen engagement, stakeholders buying, collaboration among security forces and the enactment of the critical infrastructure protection bill. I think what everybody is actually saying is that it's resolved, involving around community engagement, community involvement and ownership of community is the lastest solution to stop this kind of infrastructure. Where people talk about how infecting the securities network is in the U.K. for instance in the U.S., it's basically for the fact that even that old woman, who that widow in London, when she peeps through her window and she sees something abnormal, she reduces information to the device. So please, I think protecting our state and our infrastructure. I will connect, I promise that I am going to connect to all the suggestions and in our usual manner, I pass them on to the Federal Executive Council. What we do normally at the end of every town meeting is that we present a council note to the President so that the relevant ministries will move exactly what is in the house of them here and we will do that as soon as we get back to Abuja. The National Protection Agency will also continue to surprise and engage stakeholders, especially citizens, to hold and protect the critical infrastructure in their states. Though this town hall meeting concludes the three town hall meeting series across the respect of wanton destruction of our public infrastructure, our job of sanitizing Nigerians on this issue will continue. Following a question by the Excellency, the representatives of the Minister of Power said that the ministry has three ways to feed Maiduguri with electricity. I think this is good news and I hope that the three ways can be explored soon so that the good people of Boru State, I tell you, Maiduguri and this girl can get a much needed relief. Before I end this wrap-up, I want to appeal to our traditional institutions to leverage their closeness to the people, the grassroots, to help us fish out this. And that's so that they can be brought to justice. Finally, I want to most sincerely commend the resilience of His Excellency and indeed the good people of Boru State who have endured the ashes brought by the destruction of power infrastructure and especially the pain being inflicted by terrorists. I am very confident that the resilience of Boru, in a very short while, we are going to overcome what we see today as various challenges of terrorists. The part of the matter is that the governor has refused to leave the city. The governor has continued, I think, has attempted at the risk to his own personal life. He has continued to visit all trouble suits. He has continued to engage with the people and he is going to give the people of Boru State hope and I think this is very important. We commend him for this. Other people could have taken another alternative. They could have relocated to Abuja. From Abuja, he's sending things, he's sending messages, but no, there's hardly no day, no week, I don't follow His Excellency into nooks and crannies of Boru State where they have no food, to immediately order for food. And this is what has given confidence to people of Boru State and I'm glad that, Mr. President, appreciate this and we will go do to give you all the support you need. On this note, once again, I can thank His Excellency and the poor Boru State, you know, all terrorists here, the just leaders here, all stakeholders. I think we have succeeded in our mission, which is to bring to the front border the issue of infrastructure evil, the vandalization in Boru State in the north eastern area. But I think here we have gained much more than what we came for. We've learned more of Boru State today. Now even learn to respect more the poor Boru State for what it stands for and the determination to overcome the temporary challenges. I thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Honorable Minister.
Thank you so much, Honorable Minister. Your Excellency, the Executive Governor, distinguished Senator, Ministers of the Federal Republic, distinguished ladies and gentlemen. We're rounding up now and I'd like to invite the Honorable Commissioner, Home Affairs, Information and Culture, Boru State, Babakura Abadatou, to come forward from the words of chief organizer of this town hall meeting to address vandalization of power and telecommunications infrastructure. The Honorable Minister of Information, Laye Muhammad, who in his submissions round off that there's hope for Boru State because government has gained a lot of input and reset agenda for our infrastructure protection in Boru State.
Your Excellency, the Deputy Governor of Boru State, Honorable Mr. Mabakura. Distinguished Senator Sankara, who is ably representing the President of the Senate, Federal Republic of Nigeria.
On behalf of the outside broadcasting crew.
Our brother, basically on the destruction or vandalization of infrastructure facilities that goes with the power line as well as communication equipment. Equally to our untiring Governor, who has been giving us the leadership required for us to keep on going this fight against all odds. We all know that we have been without electricity supply for the last nine months or so, but unrelenting. And he has done so much in that field to restore electricity supply. Our gratitude also goes to the representative of the Ministers of Communication and Digital Economy, the representative of the Ministry of Power TSC Transmission Company of Nigeria, all other people that came in along with the Governor, including members of the broadcast team, the DG FRC, the DG LGA, the DG National Orientation Agency and the DG Nigerian Broadcasting Corporation, as well as our Royal Father, who is led by no other person than his Royal Hand in the show of Boru, who is also here with us. There are too many to mention. All I can say is that thank you very much for being part of this great event. And we hope and pray that Allah Almighty will return everybody home safely. Thank you.
Your Excellencies, distinguished guests, ladies and gentlemen. Everything has a beginning and also an end. We are now coming to the end of this town hall meeting. My name is Peter Derby, I have led the anchoring group. I have with me Mr. Samson, Macangiola, my colleague in the Federal Minister of Information and Culture, and in one of yours, Mr. Larry Obadaya, who is the official emcee of the state that all join in anchoring this program. We apologize in case of any mistake, but we enjoy your attention and we look forward once again for meeting or meeting with you on some other occasions. Your Excellency.
This is NBN Network Media, news for Oasis, connecting you to the world.